We have. We have two members who are attending through the internet. Tom and Ryan. So we have a forum. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from December. Is there a motion to approve those minutes? We'll take one of you as the mover and one as a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Posed, motion carries. All right. Good and welfare, Tom. You're here on the Melissa Smith plan?
Yeah. You got more copies than you got people here.
I don't think there's any changes.
All right, this is in the metropolis of Kissler. And we got about a, I don't know what the total area is there. It says somewhere, I don't have it, four or five acres there. They want to cut the existing house off of 1.396 acres and then build behind that house on 3.991 acres. They want to use the existing driveway to the property behind for access. And we have DEP approval on it. We have about all the other approvals. Jason, you didn't have many comments on this. Do you want to?
No, I had, we pointed out that, you know, that the preliminary plan process and specs needs to be looked at for waiver to consider to final plan, bearings and distances with easements, Penn dot highway occupancy permit approval, the grading and earth moving plan, ENS plan approval. There's been waivers requested on all of those items. So, you know, with that, they are kind of standard waivers that usually go through. My only thing is I didn't see, I didn't see the driveway deviate or access any of the adjoining lots from the aerial photography. There's no reservations by any other property owner.
Just his dad.
Just, okay, so they, he has the right of passage across the Melissa.
Right.
Smith property. So she basically owns the ground.
Right.
And therefore would have right of usage of that ground.
Right.
To tie in.
Yes, the lot up behind just had the right of way down across this property. Actually, his mother owns this too. His mother and dad, Nally and all this, and he'll take the lot.
Okay, so this property, lot three, is going to actually owns all the way out to the hard road.
Right.
As a flag lot, you know?
Okay. So I was looking at this, I was wondering where's their access? Okay.
Two, two accesses, one by the other house, the old original house, and then the newer one they put in when they built up.
Yeah, and they, the other lot up front has a separate driveway.
Yes.
That comes in.
Right here.
Yep. So, so this will be a two-user situation. So.
Right.
I mean, I would, you know, that being said, you know, we have in the past requested like a sample, you know, right-of-way agreement between the parties. I don't know if that's something the commission might want to have included, or whether or not it's sufficient enough, the language on the plan. As far as the long-term maintenance of that right-of-way.
His mom and dad and him really, but.
Oh, so.
His mom and dad lives back here, be going over his.
So they're not even a, a party to the subdivision?
No.
No.
But they use that right-of-way to get into it?
Right.
Right.
And then where's, how's this person get into his?
He's going to use, he owns the right-of-way, so.
Will he come in there?
Yeah, he'll come off the driveway.
He has his own driveway, okay. So this actually will only service this and this?
Yep, just two lots.
Two. Yeah, Mark's, Mark Ernest is right beside this right-of-way. He was right in his garage here.
The sewage module's been submitted.
And approved. I don't know if you got that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I have the approval letter yet, Tom. So we do have comment back from the township. They, no, they didn't have any comment, so.
When, when this lot for Scott and Melissa was subdivided, was, is there a formal right-of-way agreement for that?
Well, I don't know about agreement. It's on as deed. I don't know that they wrote.
A separate agreement?
I doubt they did, but I don't know. I'd have to look at the deed again.
You don't know whether the deed spells out who's responsible for, for what?
That I can't answer without pulling the deed again.
Yeah.
But definitely, they have, or they have the right-of-way across.
Right, right. I, um, my concern, I guess, is more for dealing with a lot of the mortgage companies these days. They say if you don't have a formal agreement that spells out who's responsible for what, they give people a hard time about getting a mortgage approved.
So what if you're not dealing with the mortgage company?
Well, it may not be you.
Yeah.
But if you go to sell, if you go to sell a house and the buyer needs a mortgage to buy the house, the lenders oftentimes will say, well, we can't do this until, and, and right now, everybody's related and everybody gets along fine. That may not be the case 25 years from now.
Three and five, once you move there.
So, so I just throw that out there, that you might want to consider formal, if, if there isn't a formal document that says we're going to share the cost equally, or we're going to share the cost 60-40 or whatever, you might want to put that in place now rather than later because it could save you some heartache down the road. I've just seen it happen a lot.
Or, or, or identification of distances of responsibility too. I've seen that laid out too. It's like up until this point, A to B is the responsibility of this party, from C to D is the responsibility of the next party or something.
Yeah.
You know, the, based on the lot numbering.
Yeah.
You know?
It's just, I know that a lot of the, of the mortgage companies want to see that type of an agreement.
Mm-hmm.
So it's easier to get it while everybody's still talking to each other.
So that being said, Jim, do you, I mean, would you want to see something like that separate, like handed and filed with us?
We need to make it a condition of the plan because, because this guy already, Scott and Melissa already have a right-of-way. So that's there, and this guy doesn't need a right-of-way as such in order to get into his property because he owns it. But I just throw that out there for you to ponder as you're doing all this.
So there would be three lots then?
Two.
Ultimately?
Two using that right-of-way.
Two, two using, yeah, two using the right-of-way, Tom. Two lots proposed with this particular subdivision.
So you have lot, lot one, lot three, and, and then the Scott and Melissa Smith, correct?
Well, lot one doesn't act, lot one has its own access directly off of the state highway.
Yeah, if you zoom in near the buildings, you'll, you'll see it up there.
Right, got it. So then it's the earnest.
They have no right to use this right-of-way road.
For now.
Yeah, that should all, that, that should almost be clarified. We've had that happen before. Where they abut, they abut, and, and quite honestly, some point in the future, somebody might say, yeah, I'm going to come in off of that.
But they don't own it. I mean, they have, they don't own any part of that other access. They have their own access, so they have their part of that.
So, so who owns, who owns the access?
Lot three. So lot one has no right to use it. They don't own it. It's not their access, so they have your right to just send them off.
Yeah, sometimes a note to that effect is, is what I'm saying. It helps to clear that up. Yeah, we, we've actually seen it go the other way where, where the, the homes abutting the, the street are, are by the plan to be coming in off of, coming in off of the, the street. But they'll come off the, the private, private right-of-way because, because off the street, it might be 25% grade. So anyway, there's some older plans, but that's the kind of thing that creates issues.
But this one's already exist, the driveway's existing.
Understand, understand.
That was the old driveway a long years ago. That was from a house from 100 years ago, probably. This was newer when they did that lot there.
Okay.
Yeah, typically there's maintenance, the, the maintenance agreements, you know, are just drafted up and so that everyone's aware of it and so forth. And it's filed, filed with the plan. Do we have any samples, Jason, or have, have you used those before, Tom?
We, we have, we do in, in the ordinance, and I think it's in, it's in the appendices, the county ordinance.
And what's, what's the width of that right-of-way for the private?
Fifty foot.
Fifty.
Fifty.
All right, any other questions? You want to summarize what the request for?
403, 407 preliminary plan proc, or procedure and specifications, 409, 5D, 5 bearings and distances for existing easements. 409, 5D, 17, Penn dot highway occupancy permit approval. 409, 5J, 1, grading and earth moving plan. 409, 5J, 2A, ENS plan approval.
All right, you're saying those are all pretty standard waiver requests?
Yeah, I mean, with an existing driveway, Penn dot doesn't usually affix a new HOP to those, providing they're staying underneath the, the minor street designation from what, it's, that's the way that's been handled in the past. Because early on, I was requesting that and Penn dot highway occupancy permit officer at the time told me that they didn't issue permits for like piggybacking on existing driveways onto the state road. Beyond, well, short of.
Three.
Yeah, short of three.
Over three, they would.
Three is the magic number.
So there are six waivers, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion, we grant the waivers.
Okay, Dave.
All right, so we moved to grant the waivers. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Tom. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Posed? All right, waivers have been granted. And then do we need any conditions on the?
Um, well, I don't have the PADEP approval letter for this, so.
All right, I have it.
Um, let me just double-check something.
Well, they, they made me have it.
Let me, let me double-check something because I have them, I have some listed in here for the month, and I didn't.
Yeah, they, you were copying on it when I got it, I'm pretty sure.
Let me look at the.
It just came.
4537. I have Sarah, Robert and Sarah McAllister on twice for Seville. One was an approval, one was a disapproval. So that's, those are the only two that I had as of the date of preparation for the meeting, so.
I don't, it just came.
All right, maybe. Well, I mean, if you ever get, if you ever get one, bring it to the meeting so that could save us having to write a conditional approval letter.
Yeah, I, I saw your name on it, and that's why I didn't worry about it, but I know they copy you with all their DEP approvals, I think.
Yeah. So that would be, that would be subject to that.
Motion for approval, subject to receipt of the DEP approval. Someone care to make that motion?
I'll make that motion. Second.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed? All righty.
You want just one of these?
Uh, just one, Tom. You can, I mean, there's no change to the plan, so you can bring them in for stamping when you bring the DEP. But I'll need, I'll need you to accept the condition. Do you accept the condition?
I accept. I think you accept. I didn't, hey, I accept the condition. I know I got it. Probably just two days.
Okay. And on the King Plan, you wish to table that? Are we okay date-wise on that?
Yes, this is the first one.
Okay. So is there a motion to table the King Plan?
Is that the bakery?
Yes.
Okay, did, did they have any questions about the stormwater seemed to be the last meeting? There was a fair, fair amount of question about that. Wasn't sure that the meeting minutes quite covered that appropriately, but anyway, that's why I asked the question.
The reason that it's being tabled this month, Tom had advised us before the meeting, that the township has changed its position on how they want to have the sewage handled for the property. The, the kitchen necessitates that they will have to put a, a septic system in as opposed to a holding tank arrangement.
Okay, yeah.
It'll be down the road a while. It'll be down the road a while.
That might be, that might be a tabling for a few months.
Yeah, at that rate, huh?
So, I didn't, did we, did we take action on that, on that thing?
No.
I didn't think so.
Yeah, that was, that was tabled, yeah.
Got a motion to table?
So.
Tom, did you say motion or?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Dave, you want a second?
Sure.
All right.
All right, move second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Posed? All righty.
Now, this is often a tangent of this, but just talking about highway occupancy permits and other things. Has anybody noticed where that, where they're entering onto the highway west of center for that small solar development?
Center, center township, right outside of town here?
Right, just west of center, a little village of center. It's out in southwest Madison Township. We approved the plan two or three months ago. They're putting in a, I don't know, 67 acre.
It's, yeah, and, and right off of two, that's off of 274 too.
I, I saw one yesterday when I went up to, is that the one on the left going up through?
Yeah.
Just, yeah, I did actually see that.
Right on that turn.
I didn't realize that was the same one we passed, but yeah, that's not good.
That's not good. Eastbound, it's okay. Westbound.
Yeah.
It's not.
They, I brought that up.
You had the name.
Yeah, brought, I brought that up and, and they indicated there's an existing access there, and, and I mentioned about an HOP, but I don't know, the, the responses were, were a little strange, I guess. They seem to be, uh, no, they know how to put the solar, solar panels in the ground, but aside from that, it's a little challenging.
I think the entrance that they thought was already in there, it appeared to me as, it was a farm entrance, like.
Yeah, field, yeah, field entrance, yeah.
It wasn't really of an in and out kind of thing.
Yeah.
Right, right.
And I noticed that because it, it did sneak up on you, like when you came from the west going west, it, it was.
It's not good.
And I brought that up to Shannon, actually. I showed her when we went up to help clean up that house. So it was, yeah.
Yeah, they said, they said the site distance was good, but, you know, I don't know what the numbers were and so forth, but, you know, they're going to have to go to Penn dot to get that validated, I would assume.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're going to have to go into that site to maintain their facilities, you know, whether.
There was actually a bunch of black vehicles in the field that day too.
Huh, well, I bet they got some, yeah, I'm sure they had some scares a couple of times, and if it's that bad. Huh, um, is that the first one that's actually being put in, in the county? I mean, oh, we have all these plans that we've seen, like nine or 10 of them, that's.
I think that's the only one so far that's actually started.
I'll have to take a trip out there, Dave, take a look at that.
Yeah, I mean, I, it is what it is. I don't.
Yeah, I'm surprised Penn dot hasn't like said something. Anyway, so the plan said, it says, got to get one, so get one.
All right. Communications are attached. Anybody have any questions regarding any of the communications?
We do want to thank you guys for the letter of support, by the way, for getting that letter of support for the application.
I darn near forgot it on the agenda last month. We had to quickly work that into the agenda before the meeting. It's like, hey, that's, I saw the minutes and I saw it, I was like.
Anything that can approve that internet access?
It is, it is already turned in. I mean, I already, as soon as I turned them all in, I still have two outstanding, but thank you very much for our side for support.
We can only hope that will help.
Our pleasure. All right, when we want the payment of expenses. Is there a motion to pay the expenses to Tri-County?
I'll make the motion.
Second? Someone out there?
You're the only other one.
I thought it would leave everyone hanging. It's got to be a large amount of money, right?
All right, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
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 All right, treasurer's report is attached. Is there a motion to go accept the treasurer's report filing in order?
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Ryan, okay.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed? All right. Staff reports?
The LPA reports, we had one meeting, I think Oliver was attended this past month. Did he include it? Where's it? I don't know if it got printed off. Oh, there it is, okay. Yeah, Ben went to it, had discussion regarding, regarding a proposed ag land development plan, and I think, I think that's on the northern end of the township, if I remember right. Somewhere up in the northern part of the township, they were putting another poultry operation. They haven't been working on the subdivision land development update. Ben is going to be repositioned to a different LPA. Karen Dixon, one of the transportation planners, will be shifted over to assume his responsibilities. They're both at the meeting tonight, and Oliver, so Karen's being introduced, and she'll get to meet their planning commission, so.
All right. Any questions on that? All right, Andrew, are you doing the program progress report?
I am. Uh, you know, December is typically a pretty light meeting, or, you know, a pretty light month because of the, um, because of the holidays. We did have a round of hats meetings. I'm trying to, there, there weren't a whole lot of, uh, not, not the most, um, action-packed meetings, uh, just in terms of staff activities. If you remember back in September, at the hats meeting, we adopted a regional safety plan, one of the out, kind of the out. You know, products of that was, was a demonstration grant to start a, a program called Silver Ride Home that looked to kind of provide Uber rides for, um, to, to try to reduce drunk driving incidents, especially over, we started it over the holidays. We had some issues with the program, so we're currently on hold. We hope to bring it back probably in a more targeted manner. We, we were trying to provide ample opportunity for people to use the, the program, and I think we were a little too generous and ended up providing a little too much, uh, opportunity for abuse. And I don't think we had a good handle on how much that would, we, we thought we would have time to react. And, and we did not, so we had to just completely pause the program and probably bring it back, like I said, with more of a focus on specific holidays like, like St. Patrick's Day, and probably around Memorial Day and those, those kinds of, of holidays where we, we typically see an uptick in, in drinking and drinking and driving. Some of the other activities that had staff has worked on, specifically Jason has been, some of the Amish and Mennonite outreach. Jason, was that in Perry County, or was that only in Cumberland?
We, I delivered maps to Appalachian Fence, Merwin, Glick, and, oh, Blaine Supply with Leonard Wise, and so they did, with the, with the, mentioned that, and they understand that if they want to sit down or want a group discussion on any of the tip projects that are being proposed to, to let me know, and we'll, we'll obviously come out and talk to them specifically, or if they have any issues that they're experiencing with our road system. But we did, we did hold meetings in Cumberland County, Dolphin County, they did not request any meeting. And that was the gentleman up there that owns the Monument Company in Elizabethville. But the, the two, the two meetings in Cumberland County were really, really good. They, they really had a lot of questions. I know that there's a, just the other day, I was, I was contacted by the former Franklin County planner, Steve Thomas, he works for Michael Baker now. And they are looking at the corridor between Newville and 81 as that area is just blowing up with like warehousing and, and actually even below, all the way down to Walnut Bottom. They're, that side of the highway of 81 is blowing up too. And the Amish have issues because there's a school that's very close to the Route 11 Ritter Highway and 81, getting across that intersection in the morning to get kids to school. So that, that came up down there. We don't have anything like that as an issue right now, as far as I'm aware, of a road crossing situation for kids with, with bicycles or, or walking to schools. It's, it's not, it doesn't seem to be an issue right now. Nobody's brought it to our attention, but 641 obviously is a big concern because the hills are up and down, and the buggy crashes down there have happened. So that, Newville, getting trucks through Newville, that, that was part of the Hats project several years ago with the, the freight movement study that looked at our squares in our region. That was Bloomfield Borough was our square here. Halifax and, and Newville were the three that were part of that study. So, you know, hopefully down the road, you know, they can get some attention to try to, you know, get truck traffic through these areas. But, yeah, that's about all I have for, for that outrage that we had.
Thanks. I'll also mention that we have a, you know, every four years, our, the NPO, so Hats goes through a, a sort of a federal certification review, typically led by Federal Transit, the Federal Transit Authority, but also FHWA. So that for us will be coming up in April. You know, got, it, there, there's a port. Um, you know, got, it, there, there's a portion of, basically, the whole, the whole thing is open to public officials. Um, and then there's a portion of it that'll be a public meeting as well, uh, Jason mentioned that. Um, excuse me, that eighty-one exit thirty-seven implementation plan, that, that's really trying to. We're, 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 we're trying to figure out how to, how best to fund projects. That are, that, that are related to the interstate but not on the interstate, that, that, the interstate tip does not cover like ramp extensions. Those are, those are kind of left to our regional tip, and those are projects that typically are way outside the, the capacity of our regional tip. So we're trying to figure out how we can best kind of leverage the, the, the user fees that the, that, the, the impact fees. That the municipality has, has, has taken in, uh, associated with some of their development down there. As well as some county fees, some state funding, and even, you know, probably some federal funds, too. And how we can get those all to work together to do some interim updates and, and improvements on some of these, uh, interstate. Locations that we know are specific hotspots, without having to wait the twelve years or whatever it would take to get a full-blown interstate project. And, and kind of full interchange update there, so trying to figure out what we can do in the meantime.
Andrew, there, one of the things that Steve brought up to me that he showed me a picture of that I thought was kind of interesting, and we might start seeing some of that up here. If we start getting warehousing, is that the, the ramps going on to eighty-one. Somebody came in and actually, they brought in millings, and they piled the millings up on the shoulder. So the trucks could not park, because they were idling and they were parking on the ramps. I mean, we started seeing some of that up on twenty-two, three twenty-two, and coming into Newport on the right sometimes. You'll see like trucks parked along the shoulders up there, or else coming up the ramp to get on three twenty-two. Um, but it was interesting, it's like, in Penn Dot's, like, get that stuff out of there, that shouldn't be there, and they don't even know who put it there.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's another one of those issues that, that, you know, that, that's part of that interstate and, and kind of freight management issue. Is truck parking, and that there, that, it's an issue because there is no easy solution, if there was an easy solution, we would have done that, and it's, it's. There, there is no easy way to fix that, so that's another. I, I wouldn't say it's a, it's a priority focus of that eighty, of that, uh, exit thirty-seven implementation plan. But it is, is gonna be addressed through that as well.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but moving on, um, we, we're doing a lot of work on our, on our long-range transportation plan, our regional transportation plan right now. Uh, we've had, we had a freight focus group, uh, just before the holiday. Where we talked about kind of needs and actions that can be included in the plan, so that went well. We're also now meeting with all of our municipalities and, that submitted transportation need forms, uh, throughout the open. Uh, period in the, in the summer and fall, so that we're kind of, uh, going through and, and getting. Making sure we have up-to-date information and everything on all those transportation needs, that'll then go into, uh. Kind of the, the, the pri- the regional prioritization of, of transportation needs and, and what gets moved. You know, one, I would say one avenue of, of the way projects get moved onto the tip, it's not the only one, but it's one of them. Um, not really related to, to Perry County per se, but Susquehale Cycle had a really good year this year, our bike share that we fund. Um, we are leaving the bikes out over, over the winter this year. Uh, hopeful that we get some use, and typically we kind of hibernate them, this year we're leaving half the fleet out. So we'll see kind of what that, you know, if we get, if we get a bump in revenue that outpaces the, the maintenance costs. Then we'll probably continue to do that.
Oh.
Um, yeah, we finished up our traffic counts and submitted those, um. Yeah, I, I think that, that's, that, that just about does it, so if anybody has any questions, I can try to address them, if not, meeting can move on.
All right, thank you, any questions for Andrew? Okay, thank you, we'll move on. Uh, to unfinished business. Uh, anything new on Picture Perry?
Oh, Picture Perry, we're, um, we have, we have nine projects that, uh, came in before the end of the year. That will be considered for the two thousand, um, twenty-five amendment cycle, um. They kind of run the gamut, uh, covering, covering, uh, housing, land use, and transportation this time. Um, a lot of them are transportation-related projects, um, so we'll, we'll be embedding those in. Um, for, well, we, we'll be sending them out to the municipalities for vetting first, and then, um, if they come back with, uh. Favorable, uh, response on them from the municipalities that, where they're located, um. We'll, um, we'll move them forward for the, uh, the actual amendments to be considered for resolution passage, so. Um, yeah, look for that process to hopefully start a little earlier than it did last year. I'm, I gotta get all of these project sheets around and, and prepared, so that we will have a nice display of what's being proposed with each of them, so. Um, that's about it. Oh, I've, I've been out to revisiting the, um, the municipalities, um, so far, I've been to actually. Three municipalities and I only had one successful visit where I actually got to meet with the supervisors, seems like. Every year, something comes up with, uh, the January meetings, that, that, they either shift them to a different day for some reason or what, but. I went to Carol last night and I saw on the door that they, they had a sign that said that, uh, their website, actually, I, I went to their website. And I saw, it said, all months, uh, second Tuesday of the month, except January, we meet the first Monday.
I'm like, oh, I think that's because they have to reorganize within a certain number of days at the beginning of the month.
Oh, is that right?
For that, I think that's why they, a lot of townships.
Oh.
Yeah, right.
Didn't I know that?
I don't know the, the specifics.
Sometimes they have like a short reorganization meeting and then their regular one, you know, sometime later, but a lot of times with the smaller townships, they. They just.
I guess.
Move that January date from wherever they.
I'll have to read that, uh, free township code again, I guess, just to, I don't remember that. Huh.
All right, any questions on, on that? Uh, anything new on hazard mitigation?
Um, our consultants, uh, contacted, um, we, we just got the quarterly report in to, to PMA. Uh, had, had everything ready and sent in, and then they come back because we had some in-kind hours for the county. To document those hours, we actually had to get the pay slips for, for Rich to actually prove that he worked. Three hundred and some dollars is all we were asking for, but we had to probably spend that much money to try to.
I'd say five hundred dollars worth of time to pull three hundred dollars.
Exactly.
Welcome to, welcome to the federal government.
Oh, isn't that crazy? Oh my gosh.
Yeah, that's not unusual standard SOP.
Oh my gosh.
All right, uh, how about the cap implementation?
Um, there was no meeting, I think our, our meeting was scheduled for Monday, but they rescheduled it for next, uh, I guess it's the twenty-second of, uh. This month, so.
Okay.
That's next week. So nothing to report there.
All right, uh, I've taken care of this.
I did, oh, I, I, backing up on that, I did talk to our consultant about the possibility of leveraging some funding. To work with our municipalities on these Act five thirty-seven plans, knowing that the cap money is actually set up for. Water quality improvements, and the consultant came back to me and said. It could be used for anything that the plans recommend for implementation, but not the plan itself. It's like they never have money for the plan, it's always about the implementation, and it just, that, they don't. I know, it just frustrates me. Planning monies are so hard to come by, and you need your shopping list before you can start to lay out what you want.
All right, um. Municipal review and report, just a couple of them on there, anybody have any questions regarding?
I guess, un- under the unfinished business, uh, the, uh, HOP revisions, is that, is that a, that horse, or? What, where are we at?
Did I skip over that?
Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't included, and I wasn't sure, uh, what we wanted to do with it.
Did I, did I get it out to everybody? No.
Yeah, yeah, I, I looked, I looked through it, I looked through it, Jason.
I got it, but there's ain't but.
Do you wanna put, do you wanna add that under the agenda, under other matters, or on, under?
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
We can do it now, I mean, under, under finished business, there's no monetary aspects tied to it. So it could be a revision, if, if you wanna amend the agenda to include it.
Is everybody okay with that?
Or do you wanna wait till next month?
I, I just, just, just a quickie on it, uh, I, I mean, in reality, um, it, it, you were, it seemed like we're really back into that. Catch, catch twenty-two on these things, um, if you've got to submit deeds and so forth, uh, to, to Penn Dot for them to. Uh, for them to approve an HOP, uh, then, then the approach that we're using in Rye Township would be the more appropriate. And that is, you put a note on the plan, uh, that leaves a blank line for the, uh, for the HOP number when it's issued. Uh, it's coordinated with, with the, uh, uh, surveyor, the, the developer, uh, and, uh, and then it's their responsibility. Uh, and, and, um, we, we pull, we pull a fee for, for getting a copy of the plan. Uh, once the HOP number's been added, uh, once Penn Dot approves it, um, if, if they do, I guess. Uh, but a- a- anyway, that's where things get a little in- interesting, um, but, uh. But yeah, then after, after Penn Dot approves the HOP, the number's put on the plan, uh, and refiled, uh, and then we get a copy at the township. Or we take the fee that was provided, uh, the fifty dollars or whatever it is to get a copy, uh, from the court, uh, from the courthouse. So, anyway, cause it seems like no matter how much information you put down there. It just kind of, bottom line falls back into Penn Dot's, uh, as they will it, um, or as the, as a political pendum, pendulum, uh. Would will it, so, whatever that might be, so anyway.
That's been a problem, you, you can't get it first year without having HOP, you can't get an HOP without an approved year, there's gotta be, I mean.
Right.
I, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with all the details on Rye Township, but just the overview.
Yeah, we, yeah, we, we just have a standard, yeah, a standard note that goes on the plan, it indicating that it requires an HOP. Uh, and, and, heck, well, we don't, we, we give approval on the plan, but the number isn't there. Until, until it's, uh, the plan is obtained, or the, uh, HOP is obtained, and then they have to go back into the courthouse. And, and file a new plan with that number filled in, uh, and then we get a copy of the plan at that point, uh. Uh, to, uh, for, for our record, so that we know what those numbers are, but, uh, yeah, it's just, uh. It's just the, the way it goes, but y- you know, I mean, the reality of it is, it's gonna be up to Penn Dot to police this stuff. I mean, that's, that's the challenge, so.
And then as Tom Palm and Nat Tech both needed to go to Penn Dot to get copies of HOPs. To have plans approved here, and they can't provide them because they can't find them, so.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it is, it's more than a catch, man, it's really rough on the clients that we service, because.
Yeah.
We're holding, it ends up taking sometimes two, three months, because we're trying to get HOPs, and now because Penn Dot. Changed their method of madness, because it can, it screws everybody else down the line, and, and I agree with him. I, I mean, we've had two already like that, that we just could, it, we were just going from you to Penn Dot, you to Penn Dot. And, and we ended up one over six months before we had a plan approved, and it was only because of Penn Dot, basically. All the other comments.
Are those municipalities, are those municipalities saying, giving you a conditional approval on the plan, subject to the receipt of the HOP?
They came through here.
See, that, I mean, that's, that's the other option, is you just, you just.
Yeah.
I mean, you could, you could say it's a conditionally approved plan, subject to your receipt of that HOP. And, and then the plan's approved, and you're still going out to get that.
Have to sign it, that's the last one that we had, you guys wouldn't sign it, because it was just conditionally approved.
Right.
That's not okay with Penn Dot, Penn Dot wants signed plans.
Yeah, that, that was the, yeah, that was the issue.
That's the catch twenty-two.
Yeah, that's, that's what we ran into, that's why we, we, we final approve them with a blank line in there for the HOP number to be added. And then the plan refiled, and that's, that's the only way you can, you can satisfy that requirement.
Penn, Penn Dot should be paying for the, that recording fee.
That ain't never gonna happen.
If they don't wanna, if they don't wanna do what their other sister state agencies do.
And, and that, what he just said with Rye Township, I, again, I haven't worked with it, and I haven't walked through the process, but that sounds amenable. That both parties are, are being taken care of, I mean, other than the fact that we have an extra step, that we have to make sure that we. Go back in and put the number in and make sure that you do whatever municipality, or you guys get a copy of it, but something has to happen, because you can't keep bouncing it around. Cause it's gonna become more and more of a problem.
Yeah, we just, we just, under, under the final, final approval, uh, we'll pull an additional fifty dollars to get the. Um, uh, to get a copy in the event that the, the developer, the surveyors don't provide a, a, uh, that, that HOP number. So, anyway, so.
Well, you wanna? Man, I, I don't wanna put this off again, but it sounds like maybe we oughta.
Revisit the language that Tom provided?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And why don't you send that around to everybody, so we can all look at it, and.
All right.
We'll.
Yeah, and, Jason, you provided, you provided the information here relative to the number of entrances and. And, uh, the policy of the department, and, and normally one driveway per permitted residential property, blah, 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 any different things here. I think that's good to include in their bottom line, it's, it's information, uh, and, uh, it, it may, may be something Penn Dot doesn't. Want to get out, you know, uh, to, to let out, but it's part of the.
Yeah, I, I, I understand, I understand the logic, but I, they, they can change it on a whim, and then what do we, that leaves us where? With something that's.
Hey, but as long as, as long as it's in the code, and, and you're identifying that it's in the code, you know, that's.
Yeah, that's, that's really all you need to say, though.
That's it. Well, you mean that it's just in the code?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, that, that's specifically vague, too.
He's familiar with code, but not everybody's familiar with scope.
Yeah, exactly, now you're talking, now you're talking like a lawyer, uh, you know, sorry, guys, I, I know there's, I know there's some of those in the house here, but. Um, you know, that, that doesn't provide any information other than reciting, uh, the, the regulatory issues, or the regulatory, uh, statutory. Like, stuff, but, uh, anyway.
Can you resend me his?
I'll send it to everybody.
Send that back out.
Yeah, I'll send it, I'll send it to the whole commission.
Oh, that's a good idea, thank you.
All right, so we'll, so look for that email, we'll talk about this again next month. Okay, um, so the, uh. The two on the review and report, anybody have any questions on those? Anything we need to know about either of those? If not, is there a motion to, uh, ratify staff's comments on those?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you, any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post. Okay, zoning matters, text amendments for Carol Township?
All right, uh, yep, that was the draft letter that was sent out, um, they're, they're doing some edits to their zoning ordinance, uh. For definitions, temporary residential arrangements, uh, temporary storage, rural occupations and lighting. Um, the letter is there to support those changes, um. With consideration for three bullet points, um, the, the bullets were, um, has there been any consideration? Given for non-traditional storage units to be converted into dwelling units rather than just accessory structures? So, we've seen these pods, I've seen where they've retrofitted pods to make them into dwellings, if you can believe that or not. It's just something to kind of keep on the radar, because people are making tiny homes. It's just something to kind of keep on the radar because people are making tiny homes and and whatnot. And that would be one of those next things that you could potentially see. Somebody wanting to propose something like that and and an ordinance wouldn't have anything set up to accept or or look at that as being allowed anywhere in the municipality, which it should.
And actually, that's going to come to play because we're looking, the county's looking at working with the company for.
The Echo Homes.
Yeah, so they're portable trance, they they move and you have, say, you want to keep your mother, I want to keep my mother out of a home, but she still has some independence, she's, you park this thing in your backyard or in your driveway or whatever, and she lives in this. It runs off of your electric and your sewer or or whatever it is that you have for sewage, so this will come into play.
Yep.
Because we're gonna.
And it's, and it's deemed temporary because it's not, it's not a permanent arrangement, it's a temporary arrangement.
Person's done with that one, it goes through a cleaning process and it goes to the next one.
Who's who's going to police? You know, that when when grandma dies and they decide they're.
Probably.
It runs through our Department of Aging.
Okay.
Agency on aging, it's not anything like that I would own or that would be mine. It would be, it would go through the whole, the choosing of using it would go through the area aging out here. And then they would, it would be one of their clients now.
Okay.
So they would be the ones to make sure everything's going.
Yeah.
And we're starting with one, but we're hoping in the next year, year and a half, we end up with three.
Yeah, and and there will be a prioritization of need. So the identification probably in that process will be municipalities that don't have zoning will probably be higher on the list to get it through quicker. Because it's a turnaround concern, it's like you you want it to be used all the time. Because you're gonna, we're going to be limited on that resource. And we want to make sure it's continuing to be functional, so.
But it's a, it's a serious problem we're having here in the county.
It is.
So it's an option to start.
The next bullet was, is recommended that the temporary onsite storage units are not allowed in the front yard. If they are intended to be left on the property for more than a week. So, you know, you don't want these things, these containers, just to kind of sit there, you know, and block the facade on structures, so. Create an eyesore for the neighborhood. It's bad enough when you have to do a roofing job and you have a dumpster out in your front yard and you're throwing shingles off into it. It sits there for a week or better. So it's recommended also that the RVs not are not allowed in the front yard if they are intended to be left on the property more than a week. RVs should still be allowed to sit in the front yard on the principal driveway servicing the property. And that, that is something that, you know, yeah, sometimes the RVs are bigger than the house, but you know, the people don't have any place to put it, you know, so if their driveway is big enough and it's not impeding anybody, what's, what's the problem with that? Just let them park it there. But I think that some of the ordinances are restrictive and they're trying to keep them out of the front yard altogether. And that's.
Again, I I shouldn't be the one complaining because I'm the Democrat, but I don't, I think that sometimes they're overstepping their boundaries of what they can tell me I can or cannot do.
So that's one of those areas where I would tread lightly on.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, people have a right to own these things. So, you know, you shouldn't have to like pay fifty dollars or seventy five dollars a month to put a storage unit down, which a lot of them do.
There's a police stand in Hillsburg, one of the townships that are represented, where this guy, we built storage, this storage and building for people to house their RVs and this, it was, it was like the Taj Mahal.
Yeah.
People were paying about fifty dollars a month, they were paying big money and you pull your RV into this place that's climate controlled and.
Yeah.
You could, you could go in there and.
And that's because they probably have such strict ordinances in the areas where they've purchased these that they can't keep them at their property. And, you know, that's, that's just, I don't know. Anyway, we're trying to make, make it a little easier for some of the people with these types of, you know, vehicles. Anyway, that's, that's basically it as far as like the concerns offered with this.
We, we just entertained a request, thirty four acre parcel just outside of Marysville in Rye Township. And and they're looking to build on ten acres and and in the remaining twenty four, they want to put in mobile, not mobile homes, but the 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 camper, so to speak, the high end. This is going to be a glamping type, type area in our, it's in our R one district and so anyway. But but what what kind of utilities and so forth are going to come? And I I suspect they're looking to ten to fifteen of these high end campers. I forget, what's the name of the ones that's the silver airstream? Yeah, thank you, yeah, they're going high end airstreams. And and I suspect that for each one of these airstreams, there's going to be a a home at some point in the future. I think they're trying to get around it, they're they're on steeper slopes, so.
Any, any open space required, is there any communal open space requirements that they're required to have in that area?
Uh, well, bottom line, in R one, they're not even permitted, it's a camp, it's a campground as far as we're concerned. So, so we, we told them to hit, hit the rural, rural, yeah, forest district. Conservation Forest District. Where they are permitted.
Yeah, there's, there's plenty of that in the township, isn't there?
Yeah, 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 and I, I sent them up to the top end of Tower Road there where there's a three hundred acre parcel. But I hear that's going to be a hunting preserve, just bordering Marysville as well, so that ought to be real interesting. So all kind of crazy crap going on, but anyway.
All right, so is there a motion to send the letter of review to Carroll Township?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. The we got a CDBG environmental review for Marysville Borough Park Rehab, what do we need on that?
It's just a letter that indicates that the planning commission reviewed the materials provided for this project and from the information, it understands the project site to be located within a FEMA flood map flood area identified as having one percent annual chance of flooding. Just, just pointing that out as part of the process. And then in addition, the pond located on the property is identified as a wetland by the Department of Interior's National Wetlands Inventory Mapping. So I've dealt with the, you know, environmental reviews in the past when the county actually had the CDBG program. So I've, I've gone through that, I know what to look for. And basically, those were the two things that I saw on that.
All right. There a motion to send that letter?
And this is administered by CCG, the CDBG programmers.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Post. Post Gary. All right, Brett's Court, what's new on that?
Um, well, we don't have any dollar figures associated with the request this time, last time I think we did. But they were, they're, they're getting ready to like submit another application into the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency to try to get this, the senior housing project going again up on Red Hill, up and back, I guess, of the Giant. So they were looking for a letter of support, previously the commission sent one, so I just kind of mimicked the content of the prior letter and just prepared something for them. And so.
Any questions on that? If not, is there a motion to, on sending this letter of support from Brett's Court?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Nice to see that still plodding along. All right, and last thing is a LBA agreement with Bloomfield Borough.
They're seeking a level two arrangement, twenty four hours of overtime. So spread out through the year. No, no major projects that are on the radar for them. We've kind of worked with them on their zoning and their subdivision last couple of years, so I think they're pretty well grounded on that.
So they've been in the program before.
Yeah, they've been in the program before, I know that there's still continuous talk of a, a pretty significant project being submitted here in the borough. So, you know, I'm sure that, you know, they'll want us like on board for anything that comes in this year, probably. I would anticipate that we'll see something.
All right, so is there a motion to approve the entering into an LPA agreement with Bloomfield Borough?
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
You show up the stamp Danny signature on that.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else for the good of the order?
I do have one thing, Jim, last night I was at, oh, Monday night, I was at New Buffalo Borough, they're, they're an LPA this year. I've been working with them on their zoning ordinance. The council has decided to, rather than have a separate work group meeting to meet the night of their council meeting and devote an hour of their council meeting to continue to work on it. So we got through the first three articles Monday night, we're going to get into the districts and all of the details and probably the the longest period of time, yeah. So we'll, we'll be, we'll be sorting through a lot of that next month. But in the meantime, I was notified today by a planning commission member from Watts Township. Last year, I think it was like mid-year, I had recommended to New Buffalo Borough Council that they contact Watts Township to see if they would be open to or receptive to the possibility of doing a joint zoning ordinance between the two municipalities. And they hadn't heard anything by the end of the year, so that was my point was to go to this January meeting and say, are you ready to move forward or do you still want to wait to see what Watts will say? And they said move forward. So that was my relay back to this planning commission member from Watts, that, you know, that's where it stands, I mean, they waited. I don't know now, maybe they're thinking that it might be a good suggestion, but I don't know how, you know, obviously, I'm just going with my direction I'm getting from New Buffalo Borough Council at this time. I did pass on the LPA agreement to Watts in case they decided that they wanted to do a joint arrangement. And they asked what that would entail. And I said, well, you'd be looking at basically putting a work group together to join in on this process with New Buffalo Borough. You'd want to structure an agreement that, you know, you will follow through on this right up front. You don't want to have one or the other backing out after you go through all of this. So it's like, if you're on board for it, then you're committed. And then when you're committed, you'll want to set up an agreement for the enforcement. You'll, you'll want to make sure that the apportionment of your breakdown with your zoning hearing board is a fair, equitable breakdown for representation. Probably New Buffalo would probably end up with one person, one person on that board. But you still want to make sure that it's something that everybody can be agreeable to. So, yeah, and I know the. Go ahead.
Hello?
I thought that was Tom, okay, so, so that's where we, where are with that, I won't, I won't drag it out, but.
All right, well. Wait for further developments. All right, anything else for the good of the order?
With picture Perry, we've had two work group sessions and we have, oh, wait, three, three work group sessions this round, there's two more coming up, transportation and housing. So if you get a chance, feel free to either jump on Zoom with us or or attend in person.
Yeah, Jason, you had mentioned, I guess, about the housing, what, what all kind of discussions do you get into there under the housing?
Once you, once you attend, you'll want to attend next month. It's, there's a lot of good discussion, there's a lot of good, a lot of good people that sit at the table that that day. And there's a lot of ideas being thrown around.
Yeah, I think, you know.
Everything for me, it's like Echo Housing that, you know, we were talking about earlier, two apartments and and trying to, trying to, you know, improve upon like infill development for our burrows. It's just a whole host of stuff being talked about.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, it seems like it's some different, different information that might be worthwhile picking up there.
Yeah, yeah, feel free to join us, Tom.
I'll do that.
All righty, thank you for your time, we will stay in adjournment until February.
Hey, guys.